You know, I get started.
Press the mute.
I already did that.
Thank you.
Step ahead of you. Good evening. I'd like to call the owner of the September 10th zoning board of appeals meeting. I might like to introduce the members. Out of my left, we have Steve Bishkov.
You're gonna have to speak really loud.
Steve Bishkov to the, to my left. To my right, we have Dennis Crowe, regular member. Next, we have John Zire, regular member, and then we have Dylan Stella, who's an alternate member. Just remind everyone that four votes are needed for an application to be approved, that any and all items used are exhibits and will be retained in the file. After the applicant's presentation is made, the board will ask questions they may have, and then the audience may ask questions they have. After this discussion, we'll ask for anybody to speak in favor or against the application. Presenters or audience speaking are asked to give their name and address the first time they speak, and then their name any subsequent time they speak. When the application has been heard, we'll close the public portion of the hearing, and then the board will go into deliberations. At that time, only members of the board can deliberate, and no additional testimony to or from the audience can be permitted. Then usually when we are finished, we will make a decision whether or not to approve the application. So I'd like to ask our zoning officer, Maria Pataola, to please read the appeals to be presented this evening.
A legal notice, Madison zoning board of appeals, Madison, Connecticut. Notice is hereby given that the board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 10th, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. This meeting will be conducted as a hybrid meeting in meeting room A, Town Campus, 8 Campus Drive, and remotely as a Zoom webinar. Attendees may join the webinar through either the webinar link below or call in information below, www.zoom.us, webinar ID 92002702103, password 388818, or call in 16465588656. Madison zoning board of appeals, application number 24-1216 Scotland Avenue, map 39 lot 54, zone R2. Owner applicant Sylvia P. Phillips, variance request to section 3.6A to allow a 34.6 foot front setback where 40 feet is required in section 12.6 to enlarge nonconforming structure to construct an addition. Application also includes coastal site plan. Further details, including application materials, are posted on the town of Madison website, www.madisonct.org, under the calendar link to the meeting. Questions and comments can be emailed to the land use office@landuse@madisonct.org up to 24 hours in advance of the meeting. Dated this 19th day of August 2024, Richard Gilbert, Chair. This was published twice in the source, once on August 29, and once on September 25, 2024.
Thank you, Maria. So before I call the first applicant, we just state for the record we are going to, Dylan Stella will be serving as a regular member this evening. So they'll be voting when we do deliberations and whatnot. So I'd like to call the applicant for application 24-1216 Scotland Avenue. If you could go ahead, please.
Is it gonna be up on the side?
Would you want the site plan first?
Yes, please. My name is Ryan Thompson. I'm an engineer and a land surveyor in Connecticut. My address is 19 Pepper Bush Drive, Clinton, Connecticut. I'm speaking here on behalf of the applicant's daughter, who is Karen Buck, and she's in attendance. The applicant herself is unable to be here this evening. So this is the site plan. It's pretty straightforward. The existing house here is already nonconforming, and it's over the 40-foot setback line. I can't read it here, but it's 29.5 feet currently. The applicant proposes to put a, an addition to the north, and because it's behind the existing, but it's still over the 40-foot setback, so we're requesting the variance for this, I believe it's 34.6, yeah, 34.6 to this front line here, which is held in common with the front line on the other side that's already existing. The other, the other variance is because it's, we need to make the building larger to do the addition. That's really the long and short of it. I'll answer
Okay. I see the footprint. I just feel a lot better if I can understand the whole plan, how it works, maybe the elevations or something.
Can you pull up the, the, okay, so can you scroll up just a little bit? So this is the existing, yeah, can you scroll up?
Can I probably screen it, shrink it a little?
Yeah, shrink it so we can see the whole, yeah. So this is the existing front, as you see it from the street, and this is the existing side that the proposed addition will be on. So there's the entrance door. Everything kind of goes to the, to the right. And I'll get into the layout of the floor plan in a minute, if you can scroll to the next page. So now, the addition will add, will be over here on the left side. So it'll just push forward, and then you can see this line here is the edge of the proposed addition. This is the existing entryway, and that's this part right here. So everything will go over there. Now, the main reason for it is, so if you can go back, I'm sorry, I don't mean to switch around, but it's just easier to explain in this order. So on the, on the first floor, you have, you have living room, kitchen, dining, and front porch, yep. And then you have one, two, three bedrooms on the second floor. Now go to the next page. So what the applicant wants to do is essentially make a larger master bedroom on the upstairs. Still, it'll still be the same number of bedrooms. It's just a larger master bedroom. And then there's going to be a, this is hard from this angle, I apologize. There's going to be a study added over here in, on the first floor, and that's for the applicant's daughter, Karen, who's here, to be able to, you know, have her space for basically an office-type environment. And that's essentially the bulk of the reason for the addition. If you want to add to any of that, I don't know if I can.
Just state your name and address.
Yes, Karen Buck. My address is 71 Deepwater Drive, Madison, Connecticut. It will eventually be 16 Scotland Avenue, Madison, Connecticut. The main purpose of this is my father passed away in 2022, so it's very difficult for my mother to live in a home by herself. So my brother and I, my brother now lives in West Carolina, is moving back to Connecticut, are going to move in with my mother. So we just need a little bit more space, open floor plan. What's our dining room now? It's what you were saying, the study will be my work office. I do work from home. I'm an insurance agent. So clients don't come in. I just do all Zoom calls, work from home, work off-site. And then want to make a new kitchen. Their kitchen has not been updated, and new windows. Since 1926, it needs a lot of updates. So we're just making a great room and a new kitchen down below, down below. The old kitchen will just become like a biological pantry, and then upstairs will be a master bedroom. And one of the bedrooms upstairs, we're completely taking the wall down. It's just gonna be like a laundry room, sitting area, so it keeps it up, three bedrooms. That makes sense. So just my mom, she said she can't live in the house by herself, and that house has been in the family. My grandmother owned the home. My parents bought it from them. So we're just bringing it down another generation. We want to keep the family in the house, and hopefully one day my kids will take it over.
I have a question. So we always have plenty of space. Did I come to the committee just building behind the 40-foot line?
So I can, I can, if you can put the site plan back on, I'll explain why. It was actually originally intended to be done that way. If you can go back to the site plan, yep. So this is the septic system back here. So we did get the B-100 approved. There's no requirement to upgrade or redo the septic system. So pushing this back would impact the septic system, the tank right here. So we're trying to avoid that.
Trying to keep the house looking like it, you know, originally was by keeping it all symmetrical on both sides.
So in order to avoid moving the whole entire septic system?
Yeah.
And plus, it would kind of look funny to our
Well, and it would, it would also be pushed back, and it would look odd. But, but, but during conversations with the architect, this was ultimately selected for the purpose of avoiding impacting the septic system. At least from my perspective.
Right now, also the house is from 1926, so every room's closed off. So by building a great room and the new kitchen, just a point where people are cooking in the kitchen, the family can be together. Three adults are gonna live there, so we kind of need a little bit more of our own space also.
So, so let me ask the, drawing here. The protrusion that exists that's closest to the street, yes. Is that the chimney?
No, that's the front entryway.
That's the front entryway.
Yeah.
Do you have a picture of the house there?
The wall?
I don't have a picture.
This right here?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's this right here. That's the protrusion that's coming out now.
Okay. So what, your proposed wall will be aligned with the existing walls or just straight lines?
Yeah, the existing, so there is actually, and it's not shown here, but the chimney is like right in this area. This, this wall is aligned with the front wall that's not the entryway.
Why is the chimney not shown?
Just, no, no specific reason, just didn't show it.
This is it here?
The chimney's
Right here.
So on the, or is that the front way, entryway, down here?
Any of the neighbors, have you done any suggestions from the neighbors that they said yes or no, one thing or the other?
The neighbors on the two family houses that live in the house to the right just want us to move it back in. They keep asking me to move it back in. I told them what we're doing. This is our neighbor across the street. Other neighbors to the side that we're building on. I don't see much of them. They're brand new. They just moved in recently. So now they're building a new, next door to you. They completely demolished the house and thought of a new house.
You're gonna see the application?
The application?
Yeah.
When I get to this page, if you just wanna?
So, so there's your two sections that you want variance, okay?
One, two, three, someone in there.
Wait, two, I'm sorry, there's, oh, six, my large mouth. explain that one?
Sorry, can I explain? So, yeah, yeah, I mean, in, in summary, because the, the site is, there's existing nonconformity on the site, the building is already a nonconforming building. In order to enlarge it, according to the section 12.6, we have to get a variance to that specific item.
So it's just the fact that it's not conform?
Just because it's not conform, that's what, yes. Yeah. Do you want it?
No. Go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Anything you wanted to do on here?
Well, I just, I didn't know if they wanted to see the
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Go over it summarizing.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, it's kind of what we've, we've already said. It's, you know, it's built 1926. It has three bedrooms. It's a fairly small structure. Currently, there's only one person. It's going to be three people living there. And, you know, just wishes to add these, these two, you know, these two, specifically the larger bedroom and the study, and then, and upgrade the kitchen. It's also for ease of the, you know, her mother, who's aging. And, I mean, essentially, the addition's gonna remain, and, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna tie into the rest of the structure. It's not, it's gonna have the same siding and everything, things that make it look appealing. Michael Sinderich is the architect. I don't know if you're familiar with him. I think he's done a number of things in the town. And that's, that's really it. I'm not really one for flowery speech, so apologize for that.
So you're saying the existing 2,200 square feet is very cramped?
It's, I mean, it's, it's dated, it's cramped, it's
The house is 2,300.
Every room is closed off, and a lot of the architects said a lot of the walls, if we're trying to open it up, and take the walls down, it would be structural. What they actually suggested, the best part is if you want to open up the house, build a addition. So the way the house is built, a lot of the walls that are closing each room off are very walls, I think.
So just, just to clarify, that 2,200 square feet is floor area, not, not the footprint of the house? The footprint of the house is 1,123?
Actually.
Okay, okay.
Mine's 23.
Yeah. The footprint?
No.
Oh.
Okay, that's the square footage, I think. Yeah, I mean, 50 percent increase.
Yeah, they're not requesting a variance.
Yeah, that complies. That doesn't have any, yeah. That all complies with what the lot, the undersized lot they have already.
Yes, but by virtue of increasing it, pushing it into that, to the
Well, I mean, that's just to try to keep it
Yeah, and people have the right to, partly, because they will within the zone, you know, plus variances. So I'm not objecting to just trying to recognize what the hardship is, is what it was not.
I think
The hardship to pass.
So, so the fact that, I think the septic system location being where it is, is the hardship. It, it doesn't allow you to push back.
The septic system is not a hardship. It's, you know, the hardship is, that's to do with why you're building more.
Why we're building more? Can I answer that? Yeah, because, you know, myself, who's lived in a house by myself pretty much, and had this square footage, my brother, who's 65, has moved into the house, and now my mother, so there's gonna be three different type of people living in one home. We just need a little bit more floor space. I have to, for me to move in with my mom, I'd like an open floor plan. So that's what the addition's all about, is the open floor plan. My brother and I are both chefs, so cook, so we wanted a nice kitchen. There's no room, the kitchen she has now, to open that floor plan. So mainly it's a new kitchen coming in. So it's, my mother's getting older. She, very stubborn woman, wants to live upstairs with us, we're putting them on those chairlifts, but I'm trying to make laundry room on one floor for her, everything comfortable, so my mom would be able to live there. My brother's an occupational therapist. I have him moving in, it's also to keep my mom in her home.
I think the hardship might be, you have a nonconforming structure to build it in a logical way, requires another nonconforming structure to attach to. It's, I don't see a hardship written on it. That gives me pause.
I'm, I'm, I'm not
Other than just, well, it's cramped.
It's a pre-existing, nonconforming lot from 1920. The house was built over what is now the setback. That's why, that's the variance they're asking for, is to, in order to put the addition on. They're going back behind, further behind what the existing house is, but it's still over the front setback because of the pre-existing, nonconforming structure being so far up on the property.
That's considered a hardship, right?
Well, I, I, what I'm talking about there, the variation, the hardship has to do with, you have to, A, well, let's justify that you need the space before you can justify the fact that it has to be there, okay? Just, just say, well, I want to have a little floor plan. That's not a hardship. See what I'm saying? And that's where I'm struggling.
I, so if I may, I don't think that there, I don't think that we're required to show a hardship for justifying the space, because the space, the total square footage and everything meets within the zoning regulations.
Yes.
So, so
Agreed. However, however, to say that you're, you need a variance, what is the hardship? Just the fact that something else, you know, something was built there, and that doesn't, that doesn't justify a hardship for anything else that comes along?
Well
I mean, you can think a lot more than that, and say, well, we already have
So again, and if I, if I may, I, I think that the real, so if you could go back to the two sections.
The plan or the?
The, the application, the two, the two sections that we're requesting, yeah. Right here, keep going, I'm sorry. So, so this, this is essentially the, in my mind, the variance that really matters, if you will. This variance, I don't believe would even be requested if we weren't trying to get this. Like, if we were just building the addition anywhere else within the setbacks, we wouldn't, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't want to misspeak, we wouldn't even have had to come before the zoning board appeals. Is that essentially correct?
For the front portion?
If, no, if, if we were to build the addition within
If you had the, if you had the space in the back, if the septic wasn't there
Yeah.
You added the addition on to the back, and it meant side
And front.
And rear.
And front, and
Well, if you put it in the back, because the front is where the problem is. If you had put it in the back, and you had, you complied with rear setbacks, side setbacks, floor area, and coverage with the lot that you have, because you also have a smaller lot, because it's a pre-existing, nonconforming lot.
Right.
You would not have to ask for it. But you couldn't put it in the back because of the septic, so you had to get it to the side.
Right, that's, that's my point. So, so, so if we weren't, if we weren't over that setback line in the front, we wouldn't even be here talking about this one. We would be able to do it. So, so this is essentially a secondary variance request as a, as a result of this. But this is the, the main issue. Putting it back closer to the septic system is not feasible, for, for a number of reasons. There's really not, you're further back on the lot, you have bad soils, you really can't replace the septic system there. You know, theoretically, you could do a mounted system or something, but, I mean, we're looking at exorbitant costs or something like that, for something that's already been approved that's being, that, that's, that doesn't need to be upgraded. So, so just to stay 4.6 feet, or actually 5.4 feet, you know, farther back, would be a substantial amount of earth work, you know, soil disturbance for new septic systems, all this stuff, and would also, in my opinion, not meet the same, you know, the, the neighborhood. It would look odd. It would, it would be further back. It wouldn't be in line with that front line. It would, it would just be an addition stuck out there in, in left field. I know that's not a hardship, but it's, I do think it matters. And so, so yes, I, I, I believe in that the hardship is the fact that to do this, you're significantly disturbing the rest of the lot in order to make it all work for one addition. And, and I'm not trying to, you know, I, I'm not an attorney, so I do apologize.
I think, I think the point that I'm making about square footage is that if in fact you did push that, just the front part of that addition back, that 5.4 feet, get less square footage instead of pushing out to the back, reduce the square footage. Now, does it make sense that that might obstruct the flow of the house and everything else?
Then it might not be keeping with the character.
Might not, but
Which is
That could be up to an architect to make it that way. So that's, that's the big question. I don't see a clear statement in the application of a hardship. And that's, when I looked at this in the beginning, and I did go to the house today to look at it. I understand. I just struggle with applications that don't
If you have questions, I mean, if you want to keep questions, or you want to go in, ordering on both deliberating and asking questions, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we have any other questions for the applicant? Comments from anyone wishing to speak in favor of the applicant?
Anyone?
I'm sorry?
More comments?
If you'd like to speak in favor or against, yes. If you'd like to, could you state your name and address, please?
The way I understand it, I live exactly across the street.
Excuse me. Can you state your name and address?
Say your name and address.
Yeah.
Dave Brown, M O R A W S K I, 17 Scotland Avenue, exactly across the street from number 16. And we've been there for 50 years, and so we've known Sylvia since she moved in. I have no objection to it. I, I want, I came here to see what it's going to look like. I'm pleased that it's, the way I understand it, that it's flush with the, with the house. When you're talking about moving that back, I'm not sure that would look so good, but the front of the house is well-architected, really, a nice house. And I wouldn't want them to see cut off any of those eaves, and that they haven't done. So, is that the question? Whether to move the whole addition back despite me complying?
No, the question is just whether you wanted to speak in favor or against the application. So it sounds like you're No, then the question is just whether you wanted to speak in favor or against the application, so it sounds like you're, you're in favor of it. That's, that's pretty much what we're opening the floor up to. Thank you for your.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments. And anyone online, or any?
No.
So, anybody else have any questions before we deliverations, or any final statements, um, from the applicant?
No, again, it's like you said, it's a house that we want to keep with the family, my grandmother owned it before my parents. I'm going to, um, take it over with the life use from my mother, of course, and hopefully it'll just go to my children, so it's, we love Madison, we want to keep it in the house, but we just want to get it updated with windows, a little bit more of the floor plan, so we can have family gatherings and actually talk to each other. Right now, with every room closed off, and you're in the kitchen, you can't talk to anybody, this is the living room, etc., vice versa, so we're just trying to make it more of a family gathering.
Okay, thank you. Um, there are no more questions or comments, I'd like to make a motion to close the public portion of the peer, of the hearing and move to deliberations. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good, who would like to start?
I'll start. Joe, this is one of those tough ones where you've got to kind of use a little discretion in what you're, now you look at this, the, I would consider the septic a hardship, just to move it, we do the septic lines and everything else, you know, that's probably a thirty-five, forty thousand dollar job, in my estimate, um, you know, I think, you know, we have some responsibilities for consistency with the town, we have a lot of flexibility as a board, we improve things that we think are borderline, too, borderline hardship, which I consider this a borderline hardship, because technically you could move something. But I think the hardship is the money factor involved there. Um, you know, I went by the house, I think, uh, keeping the line straight and everything else would be nice, and I would, I'm behind this. The thing.
Sure, so I'll go next, um, I think we should be, in terms of hardship, looking for peculiar, peculiar characteristic of the land, I don't think we should be really going outside of that, um, but, you know, in this case, because of the age of the house and the location, I, I could possibly see that as a hardship, I think I agree with Steve that, um, we do have discretion, and, um, we, um, I think aesthetically, it would look nicer, the way this is designed. It'd be nice to see a reduction of some sort, but that's not here, um, again, maybe that goes to discretion, so.
Yeah, I, I think we use discretion on everyone, at least, to see that this one's any different, and I do struggle when there's not a well-rationed, um, hardship stated there, this, these variances are supposed to be based upon hardship, or a few other rules we've covered, FEMA and so on, that, that change things, but, um, but the, um, you know, I, I understand, I understand the meaning, I do, I do acknowledge that adding the cost of moving a septic system is expensive, I also recognize that, you know, there's a lot of added space that theoretically, without talking aesthetics, but just theoretically, you could put a, put an addition on and expand things without having to, uh, approach a setback on it. That having been said, um, I do recognize the, uh, the difficulties and the, and the, you know, the closed, you know, the closed walls. Trying to expand living space. So. Just, just perception that I, I, I struggle with.
John?
Uh, well, I also looked at the house, and noticed that, uh, there's a lot of space between the two homes, and the addition, where the addition is going to be added to, so, uh, from a aesthetic point of view, I don't see that that is harming the neighborhood. As far as building the size of the addition. I think it falls within the parameters of our two zoning, so, like, uh, when everything has been said, I would support.
Dylan?
Yeah, um, I have to, uh, agree with what Steve said, um, I do think it's a difficult case, um, and I do understand that there's maybe other borderline of hardship, um, you know, with regards to the septic system, and it's a pre-existing nonconforming structure, and it would be kind of difficult to not approach it. Um, on, on the setback, um, you know, but at the same time, it's not particularly an egregious nonconformity, um, it looks in line with the neighborhood, um, it's in line with, like, the rest of the house, you know, it looks aestheticly using the M plan, um, so, and it seems like, you know, no neighbors are objecting to it, so I guess in that case, I would be inclined to, but I recognize it's a difficult case, but I would need time to cover it for this.
And, and go to yours. Make a motion? Okay, I can go for it, so. I'm making a, since the, the purview of the board seems to be towards approval, I'll make a motion then to approve application twenty-four dash twelve, sixteen Scotland Avenue. Cool aisle variance for three point six A, and section twelve one six. Stating that the, um, instruction must adhere exactly to the plans presented to the board, and the reason for the hardship is the odd-shaped lot and the location of the house. Pre-existing, can I, can I get a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's unanimous, then.
Did, do you want to do the coastal site plan now?
There's a.
There's coastal, there's.
There was a coastal, and we did not, because it's in the coastal zone, we did not hear back from Steve, they never acknowledged it. Did you want to go over the application?
Yeah, can we just very briefly?
Sure.
Do, do we, do we need to go back? If we return to the, the public?
You don't have to go in and out of the public area, no.
Okay, deliberations are over?
Yeah, you voted, so you can, we can.
I'll, I'll make a very.
Right, you already voted, yeah, so you're not in deliberation. Yeah.
Alright, so I'll make a very short, uh, regarding the coastal site plan, there's only really one reason why it is, and it just happens to fall with an arbitrary line that was established within Madison, saying that it's needed, there's really no other reason, it's not, it's not within a hundred feet or twenty-five feet of any coastal resources, type of wetlands or any of that stuff, so it's just, it's a, it's a check the marks.
Uh, anybody have any questions?
We need to go back into deliberations for that?
I don't.
I need to go back into deliberations for that.
You want to?
Say second.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I move we approve the coastal site plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have our minutes, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, um, so now we have minute approval. So.
Thank you.
My all set?
Thank you, yes, you're all set.
Well, we'll send a, we'll send a letter with the, um, variance, the variance needs to be recorded in the town clerk's office, that'll go to you and, uh, Ryan, um, I don't know who wants the original, if you want it to come down.
Okay.
Come down and get it. We'll mail it to you, you'll come down and file it.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Follow the opening, oh.
Um, wrong board.
There's no information.
Oh, sorry, this is, yeah, that would be the regular zoning.
Oh, that's.
That's regular, this is zoning board of appeals.
Zoning?
That's planning and zoning, yeah, there's. No, this is just zoning board of appeals.
Different commission.
Yeah.
Different commission.
Yeah.
You can go on the website and play all the things back.
Yeah.
They're all recorded.
You can always.
There was two of them.
Yes, two different commissions.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a, um, I'm not going to motion these, because I'm not, I wasn't here.
Oh, I move we approve the minutes from the August thirteen, segment twenty-four, the board's appeals meeting.
Scott's second, you? All in favor? I'm going to abstain, because I was not there. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye, alright, we're done.